All right, clock shows six o'clock. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If I can first can call Wolf for the Declaration of Form.
Wolf.
Here?
I'm here.
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
So?
Here. Okay, we have the form. Next item on the agenda to discuss and recommend to the Alva City Council, the approval, disapproval of the Integris healthcare facility permit as per ordinance number 2014-046. You will all receive the information and have time to look over that. Does anybody have items on that to discuss? Questions for us or for anyone in the audience? If you would, if you have comments outside, if anybody would like to make comments, please step up for voting, state your name, and we give you two minutes.
Hi, Catherine Gann. I'm with Integris Medical Group, representing Integris Medical Group. Thank you for reviewing our application again. After speaking to several people, it appears that the majority of your decision is going to be based on the report that you received, feasibility report that you received from I Bailey. I did receive that today, so I had a chance to review it and look through it. I wanted to point out several inaccuracies, omissions, and really untimely information that that report had in it. One being that Integris was not even contacted when that report was being conducted. So it had no input from Integris or what the intentions of our clinic were going to be. If they did contact us, we would have made sure that they included information regarding our specialists. The report solely and completely only represents primary care physicians, and that's not the sole intent of the clinic. We want to bring specialists that aren't in the community, not one single physician in the community right now, like OB-GYN, ENT, bring back urology, bring back ENT. ENT was once here and is no longer here because he was asked to leave the specialty clinic at Cher. So there are, there is other information we wanted included in that report that wasn't. Also, the information that was included in that report from Integris stated that in 2014, there were 3,187 visits from the Cher primary service area. And we wanted to make sure that everybody knew in 2015, there were 3,954 visits to Integris providers from the Cher PSA. That's almost a 30% increase in people leaving your community to seek Integris providers. We want to bring those patients back to your community. If that trend continues to go that way, there's no telling what can happen to healthcare in this community. We feel that 3,954 visits to Integris providers outside of Alva is too many. Another thing we wanted to make sure to point out is the only two references in that I Bailey report are from data that's more than three years old. The OSU study was completed in April of 2014, therefore probably contains information from 2013 or earlier. The other report referenced was an article that was completed in September of 2012. That's more than four years old. Healthcare changes too quickly to rely on information that's four years old. The other information we want to make sure to point out is that the providers in the I Bailey study included ER physicians and urgent care physicians. ER and urgent care physicians aren't primary care physicians. They're ER physicians, ER providers, and urgent care providers. They're two totally separate, totally separate specialties. You can't include those in your count when you're adding up how many primary care providers you have in your community. If you took out all of those, we don't know what that number would be because that's not referenced in the report. Like I said, the report is full of omissions and inaccuracies, and until you have that complete report, I don't know how you can make a decision. The other information I wanted to point out is that if you do base your recommendation off of the numbers that I Bailey reports, they report 6.75 physicians. If you remove that physician, that's not even here yet in the report. It only includes a letter of intent. A letter of intent is not a guarantee of employment. So 6.75 primary care providers to date, and that is including the ER and urgent care providers. Last year at the same time, I Bailey reported that you have 8.5 providers in the community. That's a loss of 1.75 providers over one calendar year. If you sustain that decrease in primary care physicians, in less than four years, you will have zero primary care physicians in Alva. It's important to look at the resources that you have for the community of Alva, and Integris is a resource that Alva could benefit from. Again, we've stated this over and over, the goal of the Integris clinic is not to compete with Cher Medical Center. It's to bring patients back to the community, back to the community that they're from, and back to the community that they should seek healthcare in. When you do look at up-to-date information, I could reference a study that Oklahoma State did put out just now in the spring of 2016. And they state that by the year of 2020, the shortage of primary care physicians in Oklahoma will be extremely significant affecting the care of the patients in the state. Oklahoma currently ranks 48 nationally in the ratio of number of primary care providers to the state population. We're here to help. We're here to provide physicians to your community. We're here to maintain economic stability for your community and not to compete with Cher Medical Center. We have absolutely no intentions of doing that. Just to go along with the inaccuracies of the report, I can point out in the third page of the, an analysis of the demand for primary care physicians in the Alva, they didn't even get the bed count right for your service area. There are almost 400 beds off, and that's information that's reported to the state of Oklahoma. It's information that would be easy for them to get accurate, and they didn't even get that right. So I had asked that you make sure before you make a decision that you have accurate, timely, consistent information that you need to make a decision, and I don't think you have that in this report that I Bailey put together.
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Candace Allen, the CEO of Cher Medical Center, and I just want to reiterate, through all those discussions that we've had over the past year, we do feel like it is competition for the medical center. When you go taking primary care visits away from our revenue stream, potentially taking lab and x-ray, CT, MRIs out of this community, it definitely impacts our hospital. That's what we rely on, are those outpatient services. Fortunately, we have our telemed services that has increased our inpatient and swing bed population, our census, that's wonderful, but we do rely on those outpatient services. And Catherine speaks of bringing physicians to town. It's my understanding that who was going to be in the clinic was a mid-level. I have three mid-levels in clinic at this point, right across the street, and also an urgent care that runs most of the day, every day. I don't think that adding that mid-level provider constitutes adding physicians to the community. I think that we have been more than fair in offering clinic space to allow those specialists that Catherine has referenced in coming to Alva, and have had no response from that. I don't think $50 a day is too much to ask when you're running all the overhead, paying the electric bill, the water bill, and such. So I would ask that you consider those things. As far as the inaccuracies in the I Bailey report, healthcare data is hard to collect, and some of the things that we do look at at times are old. But I do think that we're working vigorously to recruit. I'm happy to say that tomorrow night I will sign a full-time family practice doctor to Alva. I think he's a hard worker, and I think that the community will absolutely be thrilled with his services. So I think that that's going to make a huge impact on what is leaving Alva. We don't want these people seeking primary care outside of our service area. Alva needs this hospital. Each one of you know desperately what this hospital means to Alva. And we are struggling, like every other rural hospital in Oklahoma, and I'm fighting for this for a good reason. It's not just for my job. I don't need this job. I love this job. I love what I do, and I love the people that we serve. And I have a great staff of employees that want to continue doing that, and I know how important it is to our economy here in Alva to have our hospital. And I do think that that clinic will impact our revenue stream, and I don't want to see that happen. I think that bringing this doctor to town, I can tell you tomorrow night, I wish this meeting was a day later. I have a verbal commitment. I don't have a signature, that is correct, but I will have it tomorrow night at seven o'clock. What questions do you have for me?
I have one. You said you have been offering doctors, specialists, but they have not accepted.
That is correct.
So you agree that we need specialists?
Absolutely, absolutely. We would like-
But only if they work for Cher.
No, they won't have to work for Cher. That is incorrect. We are offering-
So why can't they come in with specialists if they don't work for Cher?
They can. We are offering to rent them space in the Westin Clinic where Dr. Kinsey is located. There are office space, clinic rooms open. We are agreeing to lease those out to these specialists that she's referencing for $50 a day.
Okay. Well, if they-
That's not working for Cher. That does not con-
Then you don't want them at all.
Do what?
If they don't come to Cher, if they don't pay your $50 a day, then you don't want them at all.
I think that's comp-
By shutting down this-
We don't want primary care. That's what I'm saying. We do not want the primary care. We want the specialist to come. Absolutely. They have one of the best cardiologists, two of the best cardiologists around. We use them all the time.
But simply because they don't want to recruit from you, you're saying you don't want them at all?
I don't want primary care. That is specialty. If they only bring the specialty and they want to do that, perfectly fine. I don't want their primary care impacting our revenue stream.
Okay. Ms. Allen, have you had recent conversations with Integris trying to work on something?
I actually, I actually went to see Bruce Lawrence about a month ago. Bruce is the president of the Integris system, and he and I had a nice conversation, and he understood the battle. He said that he would get back with his team and get back with me, and I have not heard from him at this point.
Did that conversation take place a couple days ago?
No, that was a month ago.
A month ago?
Yeah, at least a month ago.
Any other PAs or any other doctors taking about leaving Cher, this person coming back?
Not that I'm aware of. If you're referencing Culvert, no, he will not be back.
Is he the doctor mentioned to be on medical leave?
Yes, sir. Any other questions you have for me?
My question could be both of you. You know, you talked about the loss that we've had over the last year of doctors. Has Integris not also experienced that loss also? Have they lost doctors also?
Yeah, we have lost doctors, but that should not affect the application that we've-
How can you guarantee that we can bring in a primary care doctor? We're not going to lose him in a month or two months or a year. What do you argue?
We can't guaran-, that's not something we can guarantee.
How can you guarantee anything on any of this?
Yeah.
In the signed book, then how can you guarantee that they would?
That's the whole thing. You can't guarantee anything on any of this.
You can't make a guarantee off this. That's the, that's the hard part, and that's the hard part about how the ordinance is written. It's written in a way that there's no way to guarantee anything, and there's no way to bring healthcare, bring a physician to Alva without a vote of the city council that says yes. There's just absolutely no way to guarantee any of that. What I can guarantee is that last year, 30% more people from Alva came to Integris to see a physician outside of Alva. I can guarantee that. I can also-
Primary care, primary care specialists.
But, but.
What's the split?
Um, I would say it's probably a 50/50 split. I don't have that breakdown in front of me. A lot of them are primary care, and a lot of them are specialists.
I think that now was omitted actually from the, from the I Bailey.
We weren't asked, we weren't asked to submit it. We weren't contacted by I Bailey to submit that.
I mean, if we don't have specialists here, we've got to go somewhere else.
And that's why we want to bring them here.
That's why if we could get the specialists to come. Alva itself isn't growing. So how many doctors do we really need? I mean, you know, we can all have percentages all of our lives, but how many doctors do we really need in Alva?
Can I answer that?
Yes.
One thing that I failed to mention, Catherine brought up the shortage of primary care physicians, and that is real. What we are doing is what people all over the country are doing, is hiring mid-level practitioners. That is where it's going, and one reason is because of the shortage, but another is because of financial stress. You know, we can get mid-levels that can provide that first layer of care. If they need a higher level of care, you know, that's why we have a physician and mid-levels under them. If they can't handle what has been, you know, presented to them, they can bump it up to the doc. They've got a doc next door they can ask. They can get on the phone and call. I think that, I think we're a little slow in accepting that as a community, but it's real. It's going on everywhere. Questions?
Ms. Allen, were you contacted by I Bailey's report this morning?
I was, yes, sir.
Do you remember the course of your conversation?
He asked me how many primary care providers we had, and that was pretty much it. He just wanted to know how many, how many primary care providers we had. That's all I can remember.
Included in the primary care provider count, as Gann raised the question about the mid-levels that they serve, the emergency, the urgent care clinic, not being a healthcare expert, are they considered primary care providers?
Some people use the ER for primary care. Some people use the urgent care for primary care.
So it, it doesn't acceptable. I just, I'm really, I'm really out of my mind here.
If you are the provider, you don't want to provide primary care in the ER. Some people do use it in that manner as they do urgent care. They just, in today's generation, they don't seek primary care providers. They don't care to go see Jason Gasford every time. That's the only person I see. It's more about, I want to be seen right now. It's convenient for me. If Lynn's on, I'm going to go see Lynn. If Kevin's on, I'm going to go see Kevin. I don't care. That's more what we're seeing, and I think you would agree with that.
Absolutely. As the owner of Cher. Would you consider, in the way that you assess the needs of the community, when you would account your primary care providers, do you consider those people to be a part of that group, or do you need additional doctors?
I will, even getting this family practitioner doctor, we will continue to recruit, and that never stops, honestly. That never stops. What we are seeking is not what a recruiter can provide. We want the networking with people who have grown up here, or spouses of people who have grown up in the area. That's the key to this, and that's what we're after.
That's the key.
Absolutely. Those are the people that's going to help us the most.
With the best of your knowledge, is the mid-level practitioner that is going to be leaving the community included in the count? Would the I Bailey report-
David Holland, he is, I don't remember. At, right now, right-
Three doctors and nobody's going to tell me who.
I have two doctors and three, oh, I have three doctors. No, two doctors. I've got three down here in this clinic. I've got two in the urgent care, and the ER is staffed with two, will be staffed with two mid-levels, and then a doctor that rotates through there.
The I Bailey report references three full-time positions which we can uptake out, two full-time positions, six mid-levels. So that would include-
That would include Holland. I think that was long enough ago that David had not given his notice at that time.
But your full-time position, where you're there when one contract runs out, will have another one starting?
Oh, no, I won't.
We've one contract left.
The third one was a contract that was cleared out.
Right. So we have essentially-
There are three now, one's on medical leave. Where's contracts up, the other contract?
Obviously medical, so it's a loss. They're all right.
It's, yeah. I think so, yeah, it's-
Any other questions, Ms. Allen?
Thank you.
Questions? That will comment on the actual ordinance that's been set, whereas I deem it of interest that Alva's ordinance might assist in better coordination of healthcare in hospitals within the city of Alva in order to ensure the quality and form of healthcare provided to citizens of Alva. Just based off of that paragraph right there, that, is that it's the second line, it's the very first section of the ordinance. It's the very last part of that, that quality and form of healthcare provided to citizens of Alva. Bringing more specialists or doctors to the area, I don't see how that could form anything with that. And the second part, so there'd be no decrease in the provision of health services levels without the decrease. The only thing that's part of that might be subject to this, you know, financial or staff purchase to share. And that's all I want to know. All we have is I Bailey.
Ms. Allen?
Yeah?
Do you believe, you mentioned that you do think this will provide or cause potentially a new financial hardship, or have you experienced any of this, like, of partnerships?
Well, in fact, you mentioned David Holland. He is going to work for Integris. Kaiyan used to work for Cher Medical Center. I have been told by a very reliable source that one of our doctors was in talks to go to work for Integris here, and then we, one of our providers actually had mentioned to me that he was talking to them as well. And so we talked about it. It was the first thing that I knew that he wasn't happy with what he was doing. He wanted to go to primary care, and so we made that happen within two weeks.
What was he prior to?
ER. Mr. Nuttner.
Maybe a distinction between ER and primary care?
Excuse me?
So there may be some distinction between ER and primary care?
Yes, absolutely.
So do you ask, I believe that a board office has already-
It, yes, it could. It hard has.
The employment of any physicians outside of Alva to Integris has happened without the clinic being here. So you can't take that into account for having a clinic here, because the clinic isn't here yet, so you don't know if that's going to happen. David Holland did work for Integris before he came to Alva. As far as the other physicians go that Ms. Allen referred to, sounds like that's all you're saying, and nobody really knows. So I don't, I don't feel like that would be appropriate for the commission to take into account.
Ms. Allen, what are your opinions on that? Can you tell me why Integris has not responded to Cher's offer of these space for the elderly patients?
Well, back, not quite a year ago, we did come out. Mr. O'Brien sent us a letter asking if we could collaborate together. So Kevin Seeley, Vice President of Integris Medical Group, and I came out to Alva, and we had a sit-down conversation with several members of the hospital administration and board. During those conversations, we were told that the reason Cher Medical Center wanted us in their building is to keep an eye on us and to know where we were sending our patients. We had previously had physicians in Cher Medical Center specialty clinic space. They were asked to leave. They left, and that's when we sought out clinic space to bring those physicians back to the community. We let the, those in attendance know that we didn't want the option of coming back into Cher specialty clinic space simply because of the mismanagement of the specialty clinic space before. It would make more sense for us to go into our own location, and Cher to be able to utilize the space they were offering for any other services that they may be involved to increase revenue for. So we thought it would be a better decision for both Cher and Integris to go this direction. That allows Cher that space to open up to any other physicians that they saw fit to fill that space.
Ms. Allen, do you know approximately what the number of patients that are still here are?
I don't want to make a statement because I don't know, but that, I do know that the rent, the lease agreement is for 365 days a year. It's not for a half-day specialty clinic. It's full, full rent of the entire clinic space for every day of year. We had also already furnished that location before Cher offered their space. We fully furnished it. We hired staff, and we had dropped IT lines, phone lines, internet. We had completely invested everything into that building, and it just wouldn't make sense for us to drop that at that point. We'd also signed a long-term lease.
Would it make more sense for Integris to be interested in that space in Cher if that were one of the ways that you could build something where you need patient care for your patients' health? It seems we would have been a battle for Integris to get a business permit for it so now, but it looks as though there's a tremendous possibility that Integris would be committed to a specialty clinic in Alva and just to put a primary care side. Would that not allow you to service some of your patient care now, or provide service to?
It would allow us to provide service to the specialty patients. The application's already submitted, so I can't say tonight. I don't have the discretion to make changes to that application. Can't fully answer that question.
I appreciate your, really, Mr. Allen.
I will say, though, when you talk about lab and x-ray, like Ms. Allen did, we have shown a commitment to sending patients to Cher Medical Center from our Cherokee Clinic, from our Winopa Clinic, and from our Medford Clinic. Last year alone, the information that we pulled shows we sent almost $300,000 worth of those types of services back to Cher. So we can prove that we're willing to work with Cher Medical Center. That is business we could have steered to Integris and even, like the commission is saying we may try to do, but it's not. It's business that we sent back to Cher that was completed at Cher and done right here in Alva. That's from all three of those clinic locations, three different physicians. We have a commitment to Alva. We have a commitment to the people in Alva. And I know, just from being from northwest Oklahoma, that hospitals are very vital to sustaining economic status for a community, and Integris' mission is to provide healthcare to the people of Oklahoma, and Cher Medical Center is part of that mission. We don't want to compete with them. We don't want to compete with them.
You made a comment that you sent patients to the hospital for lab, x-ray. As somebody that's been a patient, it's my understanding, you can't necessarily force somebody to go somewhere. You can recommend, um, as a patient, typically I go wherever the doctor asks me to unless I've stood up and said, "I want to get this done in a certain place." You said that this was over the last year. What were the numbers reported? Because I have a funny feeling that those numbers may be inflated because of the last denial.
Um, they're, they're absolutely not inflated. I could pull that information, but I don't have it. I would, I would, I would guess it is more because we increased by 30%. So, it's probably close to a 30% increase, but that's due to patient volume. Uh, so, all your numbers are based on patient volume. Um, so, I would, I would guess that those numbers, uh, react with the increase of patient volume. Um, I, like I said, the patient volume increased by 30%, so I bet revenue increased by 30%. It, it all ties together.
So, okay, we don't have those numbers, so we can't compare that right now.
May I answer, like, on the question? Um, Kaiyan, Chris, well, I also work for Integris. Um, being on the other, the clinical part of it, you know, I'm a nurse. I've been in Winoka, I've been in Cherokee, I've been in Enid now. And all of those areas, the doctor typically says, "Oh, you're from Alva. Would you like to have this done at Share?" Because, yeah, I don't want to drive to Enid every day. I don't want to drive somewhere else to have my lab, x-ray, MRI, anything else done. So, we try, if you're from Alva or the surrounding areas, we try to send them here. Number one, to help the hospital out, because we all know that we need it. But number two, it's easier for the patient, but that's up to the patient. We can never force them to go anywhere, like you said.
Ms. Allen?
Just a couple of things.
If, uh, if you don't mind, I, I'd like to start with a question.
Okay.
And then, obviously, you have said-
Sure.
I don't believe that you were in the meeting, because Ms. Anne referenced earlier-
That wasn't it.
But do you have someone here that can tell us why we want to keep an eye on things?
All right, guys.
I'm Jason Gassford. I'm the Chairman of the Board of AHA. Those words were not used exactly that we want to keep an eye on them. What was offered, and then I'll just take a step back. When you guys met a year ago, one of the questions that came out of that meeting was, "Isn't there a way?" Matt, it might have been you exactly. Um, "Isn't there a way?" There's got to be a way that somehow these two entities can work together. We left that meeting. We sat down with each one of the council members in a group. We heard what they had to say as well. And we came up, um, and, and then met with Catherine and Kevin Seeley. Uh, and we first offered, we went through what our medical needs assessment was and the services that they had provided before in our community. And we said, "We will find you space in our hospital." And, and let me take a step back as well. We did not ask them to leave. We did not kick them out, any of the specialists. That has been talked about by Integris multiple times. That is not what happened. They were serving our community at the hospital. We felt the need to create the urgent care, and the urgent care has been a success because it has seen lots of people, lots of patients. We moved them to a space and we were told later by our surveyors that we could not use that space because that was considered licensed space and they needed to be an unlicensed space. We then rented from the city space right across the street to move those specialists to, and those specialists did not want to do that. They never signed a contract, they, they had a contract in their hand to go there, they never signed the contract to go down there for the $50 a day. We were going to be out way more than the $50 a day that they were going to have, uh, from the time that they were going to use it. So, let's get that record straight. Number two, we're in this meeting with them, we offer the, with the specialists that were already coming here, plus the areas that are medical needs assessment. We identified several days of the week that would be available. They told us, "Well, we don't want to, um, be limited to a certain number of days." So, I turned around and we told them, "Five days a week. We'll give you five days a week." They then said, "Well, we don't want to be limited to what specialists we can bring here." We then said, "Okay, we'll open that up to whatever specialist you want to be here." Kevin Seeley said, "Put that in writing and send that to us." That's how we left that meeting. We put that in writing, we submitted it, every council member got a copy of the same letter. They never responded there the very night of the council meeting. After the meeting, after they were denied, I told Kevin Seeley himself, right out here in the parking lot, that the offer still stood. We still have not had any response from Integris. Candace went down and visited with the CEO of Integris Oklahoma over a month ago. We still have not had a response. They say they want to work with us and they want to be here for our community. Number one, if that's the case, I would assume that they would have taken us up on our offer and number two, that they wouldn't be trying to recruit our physicians to take them elsewhere. Thank you.
We kind of stole my thunder, but the only other thing that I guess I would have to add, um, if, if the application is approved, it impacts our business enough that we close our doors, they do benefit from our closing greatly.
And the community loses-
And the community loses huge.
We might as well close the grocery store, the college, everything, because without a hospital, they're not going to recruit anybody.
And it, this just feels like competition. This does not feel like Integris wants to be a partner. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I, I think the timeline that Mr. Gassford, uh, had wrote out for all of you guys is very inaccurate. The, the specialty clinic space down at the downtown was not awkward till after our physicians were already out of the community. Um, and again, like I said, it, it's, they're already at its start, I guess, how it happens. And, um, if we would have had a recorder in that meeting, I guess we would all know exactly what happened. Um, but those words did come out of the mouth of somebody in that room. Um, we also had already leased the clinic space. I don't know the exact date that, uh, Ms. Allen talked to Mr. Lawrence in Oklahoma City, but I do know that happened because he contacted us to let us know. Um, uh, the, the President of Integris Bass was out of town for a couple, for about a week and a half, so he didn't have time to follow up with him. Um, and he definitely wanted to get the whole story before he, uh, returned a phone call or made any decisions and, and he didn't have the entire story. Um, he definitely does a great job for Integris and he definitely is a community partner for every community across Northwest Oklahoma, and I, I don't think it's appropriate to, um, talk about what he did or did not do without him in the room. Um, again, I think what this commission does is make a recommendation based on the ordinance. And again, I don't think you can make a recommendation, or at least an accurate recommendation, based on the information that you have. Um, the, like I said, the, the majority of your recommendation will come from the IBALE report that was submitted and obviously, everybody agrees, there's a lot of inaccuracies and misinformation and omission. Um, if you can't recommend, make a recommendation, an educated recommendation to your council, I don't think you should make a recommendation.
Ms. Anne, is your concern that Integris will, or plans to respond to Ms. Allen's conversation with Bruce Lawrence and potentially even to the offer of space given at the time?
I don't know, um, what, where the process is with, in response to, uh, Mr. Lawrence's conversation with Candace. Um, I don't, I think he's trying to gather information right now, and I think he got a lot of misinformation. Um, I don't think, I think that, uh, we've followed every step. Uh, we've followed every step all the way up to, um, uh, Mr. Lawrence and we've done the application the right way. Uh, so, I would say, if that's in the timeline, it is, I don't know.
Jason, can you say with certainty why those doctors did not sign any contract in the space across the street?
Can I say for certainty why they did not? No.
Can we clarify? Those doctors were, are actually independent, am I right, Catherine? The urologist? We were dealing specifically with the urologist.
Yes.
The ENT left because he was mad that we wouldn't move his 300-pound chair and wagged all over the hospital. That, and I, and I told him, I said, "If you, if Integris would like to purchase the chair that you want, we will put it in a room and it will be yours. We will not move it." He said, "Then I'll take my toys and go home."
But the, but the urologists that, that, uh, were being spoke of as well, those are not Integris employees. They're independent physicians.
She's referring to them as our physicians and they are independent, they are an independent property.
But that wasn't my question.
Okay.
Why did you not sign the contract? Did you guys offer them $50 a day?
$50 was too much.
They did not have the-
Yes.
And again-
They paid $50 at the hospital prior to that, but by moving down here, $50 was too much.
Again-
And those are independent physicians.
The urologists are independent physicians and, and aren't the physician that I was referring to. I was referring to the ENT physician who did receive a letter from Share Medical Center stating that he could no longer use the state.
Because of licensure issues, he was going to have to move to an unlicensed space.
He was going to have to move across the street. And $50 was-
Uh, no, the, the-
No.
Across the street was not open at that time. He, he had to move because of the licensure issue and that's when we sought out space. It wasn't until after we signed the lease agreement that this space became available.
Okay, so, with the ENT, when, uh, the licensure survey said that we could not do that, um, I had, I had a conversation with the ENT and just told him, you know, "Here's, here's what we're up against." And he did say, "I will take my toys and go home." I never heard boo, not another word about anything. Um, in my opinion, I think the urologists, um, were pushing this and that is why they would not lease space from us, because they wanted to go to the Integris space. That's simply my opinion.
I'd like to make one short comment. Um, we've, we've all seen the articles in the paper, read stories about hospitals closing. Mary alluded to it earlier, that when a hospital closes, it, it, it's not a few people that are affected. In Alva, you're talking about, one, the major industry in Alva, which is our college. If a hospital, if our hospital were to close, the sports would go to Western League. Now, we can argue that they wouldn't, they'd be gone. No football team is going to come here without an emergency room. Now, we are talking about the absolute worst case that should a, a small clinic come in and, and provide enough competition that it would close our hospital. I'm not going to stand idly by and even attempt for that to happen. I'm very biased in the fact that we have a hospital and I will do whatever I can, both as a commission member and as a council member, to ensure our hospital is always here. If that means that we make sacrifices by having to have some of our citizens drive 20 minutes to Cherokee, to Winoka, to see the physician of their choice as opposed to seeing them in downtown Alva or on the Boulevard, I'm okay with that. Because it ensures that we have a hospital that has an ER that is open when those clinics are closed, nights, weekends, and holidays. I have been in that emergency room on a weekend. If it were not there, a road trip to Enid was not possible. And because that hospital was there, I'm able to sit in this chair today. I'm very biased in my opinion, and I make a motion, we deny this application.
Ms. Lawrence, I appreciate the lead of the way you were giving it to Alva. Um, before you consider Mr. Lawrence's motion, I would like to make one statement about the debate. I guess I'm, um, I'm hopeful we're all ready for the lack of those things. I still would like the envision of partnership between Share and Integris. I would love to have a specialist. I think that would be, be, is benefited to our community, we can provide as this body, and I think it's something that Integris can do to extend all of the branches it will over old bikes and old units to show that they actually have the best leaders in Alva in line, in line. They have before them in Integris, do that. They have a document offering them space and they have a commitment from Ms. Allen and her staff to support their decision should they decide to do away with the primary care in Alva in a specialty capacity only. I assume that that would carry weight in the city council if it were to come to agree that Integris can bring their specialists to try and serve the, the community. I've heard both sides say tonight that they wished there was more time. Ms. Allen mentioned that she wished this meeting was a day later because she would have her first signed contract. It looked arrested questions about whether other doctors come to town. Ms. Anne referenced the idea that their CEO and the President at the Enid Hospital, or Enid, the Integris service, were both, uh, still trying to get the facts concerning this matter, which leads me to believe that if we can out of time, or at least sometime, or a deadline, announcement of a deadline, that we may still find room, which is why, like the federal step on Chairwoman Moore's toes, if we do not have a second to this announced motion, my motion would be, would be to delay this meeting 14 days at minimum and give the first opportunity we had, and that would be in both Ms. Allen's time to provide the contract, the position you made in town, and Ms. Anne and her employer's time to actually respond to the offers on the table from Share Medical Center prior to exactly the board. And beyond just the additional time, I think that it's interesting that Integris, to my understanding, has provided the desired report today.
I received it today. Kevin Seeley is out of town and Kevin Seeley did not mean this, but we did not receive it very tight.
So, less than 48 hours to review the report, and I think the scan brings up some valid, I don't know if they're absolutely correct, but I would say that there are at least valid questions. The fact that I may have never contacted anybody in Integris to provide new data for their feasibility study. Um, the idea that there may be some distinction between a primary care provider and the emergency or emergency care provider. Regardless, she had three or four points that I tried to write down that she was willing to include, but I, I think, I think garner at least investigation because in the world that I come from, no report can be valid unless it's held up to scrutiny, and I don't believe that Integris did not have time to read this report and ask these questions of IBALE and at least give IBALE the opportunity to provide Integris's responses in the report and their justification for their methodology, but I don't know that we're holding the most valid, accurate document possible. I'm not saying that anything will change, but I would certainly like to see the responses to that, of course.
My question would be, this ordinance is written this way as a primary care. Do, would we not have to vote against this ordinance and have them come with a new ordinance for specialty care?
Application.
Application, application.
We would. Uh, the possibility exists for them to be able to change and make operations to what they have on file.
But what kind of a timeline is that?
I believe that, I believe there's about 160-day journey, maybe it will speak to us, 160-day window for the application to be approved or not.
We need, we need to back up. We have an application that we have to vote on tonight. Amending that application-
Well, that would be something outside of the-
But there are, there are ways- Go back to one of your points. Part of the reason I'm making this motion is I have failed to see any collaboration on the part of Integris with the hospital over the last year. After multiple attempts, so, giving another two weeks, I don't feel that that's going to do anything. They, they've been working on trying to get something together for almost a full year.
You may be correct. I'm not saying it's going to be safe.
Having the meeting a month ago with the CEO in, in Oklahoma City, owning my own business and, and dealing with other business owners, if you have a month to respond to something, that's enough time, even if you're gone for a week on vacation. A response of some kind. Nothing has been given. Nothing has been given back to Share.
Asking for the leg.
Not a, not a thank you, not a, when can we meet again, not a, I'm looking into this just so you know, nothing. I don't feel that there's any want to work together at this point.
That means, sir, was on maybe 11.
My, my concern comes, one, both sides had asked for additional time tonight, or at least reference the idea that additional time wouldn't be a bad one. But I do, I do...
I do not get that in front of one side.
Well, I got it from Candace, because she said that was the meeting.
We are, we're simply willing to work with them on specialists. We don't want primary care, that's not what the application...
Which makes perfect sense, and I would actually like to see Integris respond to that, if they, if they could. Now, the other thing though, is that I do have some concerns about the I Bailey report, and I can see where you've come from, I think you're wrong. But there are four criteria that we're supposed to take into account when we judge this application. Without the I Bailey report being a report that I feel is above reproach, which would simply mean that Integris has the opportunity to read it and to pose their questions about it, have I Bailey offer the responses, because again, the report may be perfect, but without the scrutiny of a peer review opportunity, I don't know that it would, that it holds up, and I would just like to see that. Number one, I think, does not apply in this particular scenario, the proposed hospital, health care facility would contribute to the orderly development of hospital, surgical services in Alba, don't believe we're talking about a hospital with surgical services being provided here, so I can see that it's relevant, but number two, undue financial or staffing hardship, again, goes back to the feasibility study provided by I Bailey on the undue financial hardship, because referenced in that report specifically is the number of primary care providers in the Alba area and the amount of, of the volume of business that the Integris clinic would have to do to be at full capacity. One of their primary points in their finding is that Integris is going to be below full capacity, meaning they're going to have to pull business from somewhere. Several of those options include taking business from Share. However, if Integris's questions as to the validity of the report, the count of doctors, of mid-level providers and everything else, if they have any validation there, that number may actually change. The other part of that is that they used year-old data from Integris and did not even contact them to provide new and up-to-date data, and as the scan told us, they had seen a 30% rise in the number of patients from Alba traveling to Enid to seek care of some sort. Integris, if the first time through, did not or was not willing to provide the reporters with a statistical breakdown between primary care seekers and specialty seekers, I would hope that this time, your legal team will reconsider, and we could see that as a breakdown. But in order for them to provide that, I Bailey would have had to have contacted them, which again, causes me to have a question as to why, what justification they have for having not done that. Point three, the proposed hospital to be adequately served by the city, it appears to me as though it can. The document from the water supervisor is unsigned, Joe Don, but I assume...
It, it is signed the first time, the facility that they were asking for has not changed, it still meets the water and sewer specifications.
So, number three, I think that they get an approval, but then number four, will not increase the cost of medical care, and I think the chance of losing to the idea that fewer doctors and spenders would provide additional medical care, you can't see how it would affect the cost. I don't see it directly affecting the cost, but I do see, if financial hardship is caused, which again, goes back to the numbers that Integris did not have an opportunity to provide, share closing or reducing services would dramatically have an impact on the indirect cost of medical care. If we have to drive further, if we reduce services in our community based on financial hardship, that to me is an increased cost of medical care, which would cause me to agree with you in denying this application. However, without at least the opportunity to have the report, the document justified as to why the methodology did not include new numbers from Integris, or give them the opportunity to provide, I cannot, at this point in time, in good conscience, approve or deny what we've got in front of us, because I can't fail to expect that. And I think that that's a simple, a simple remedy, is that Integris should have been given time to review the document and pose their questions, so that the justifications for why the report was done in the manner in which it was to be at least noted in the
Not knowing, nobody from I Bailey is here to explain their reasons.
But I don't think that any of us would agree that it's...
It is, the fact is, that is what we are tasked to use, is the information presented tonight. Now, I've made a motion, if there is or isn't a second, we need to move forward there first. We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
Back to my reason point with the chairman, I'm feeling an obligation in my to abstain vote based on the idea that I think that the board needs to have that data approved.
Aware that an extension is enough?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Would you put restatements to Lawrence's chairman's motion?
Yes. Mr. Miller motioned to deny the approval, denied the approval of Integris Health Care Facility permit as per ordinance number 2024-0467. I agree. Thank you. More? Miller?
Yes.
Hamilton? Yes. Adair?
Yes, sir.
Chalk?
No.
Mr. Chairman, if this is not a proposal, would you dispute to reach a recommendation for the council?
Correct.
Are we in a position to make a second motion?
We have, we have made a motion and voted on the, on the agenda item. It resulted in a tie, we were voting for a recommendation. I don't believe that in this committee, then, because we had a second, if it had died for lack of a second, and I believe a different motion would have been allowed. At this point, I think there's no recommendation to take to city council. City council will have to make that decision at that time. I believe that your, your argument for more time would be valid at that point.
Hopefully, all that information will be...
I would hope that information would go from there. But to make a second motion on this agenda item, on my non-legal...
Yeah, I don't know either, that's why I asked.
Would be that we have made a motion and voted on that discussion item.
Always told, you don't know really what we're doing.
I don't think this is a good one to hear a bad question.
And what I would say, my plan would be, at this point, that this would be an agenda item on the next council agenda, which is Monday, unless we have, I mean, we've got 150 days from the date of the application, per the ordinance, to get it to city council. This body has met and has failed to make, make a recommendation by, by a tie vote. There's nothing that states that the agenda item, the permit, has to be provided at the next council meeting, but it does have to be submitted to council within 150 days of the application. So, there is time if we want to...
There, there's time to council?
There's time for me to take it to council if we would, just so everybody knows, because I have, and the reason I bring this up, because I have told this body, I'm pretty sure I've told this body, I've told the city council, I know I have told Kevin Sealy, that my intention would be to have this on the June 20th council meeting.
And that would be a good question.
Huh. The city manager, I normally set the agenda, the mayor does make recommendations, as does any other council member.
But that can take us time to get a recommendation. Monday? Well, if we didn't, I mean, if you didn't have it on Monday... We would be no biggie if we questioned it to the next town.
I mean, if it, that would be the, that would be the first Monday, well, actually, the first Tuesday in July, because Monday is a holiday.
And I realize that we've reached the conclusion of what we were to do, that I do want to put it out there, I think that the way to the dialogue really, the mayor does have a final say or setting to the chairman, so I wouldn't tell you that you could give no time about that kind of thing in the mayor's office. I'll put the question on the mayor's.
Well, I can have those, I can have those conversations and...
Can discuss by the table or...
Since we didn't agree or, or disagree, basically, if it's just a viewpoint on this, does it automatically go to the...
Well, our recommendation is the council.
It would, yes, it would go to council if a, there was no recommendation.
There was no recommendation, the tie, there was, there was...
Council makes the decision to...
My report would read that...
Send it back to here or vote on it.
The report that I would give city council would read that after lengthy, you know, basically, after a lengthy discussion, there was no recommendation made because of a tie vote.
Thank you.
And who could get in touch with who? Who could get in touch, I mean, we don't have to worry about it now.
This, we've made the recommendation, it's up to the mayor to decide if this goes on the next agenda or not. If it goes on the agenda as a discussion item, it will be either taken and sent back to this committee, or a vote will be taken.
That could, that could happen.
The city council will vote to approve, deny, send it on.
Correct. Yeah.
There's a lot of things that can happen, but it does have to go to city council next. There's not a reapplication.
Let's just say we pick together on this specialist, because we do need specialty doctors.
Beyond that, thank you all the representatives. I appreciate the time that you guys spent talking this week, and your very delicate arguments here, and the standing back to Integris, and I would say, thank you, thank you for the questions, and I appreciate your, your, your report back to us.
And just for the, just for a little bit of clarification, on page five of the ordinance, it does say, "The business manager and/or his designees shall schedule the application for a permit to be considered by the city council within 150 days after the publication of the paid notice."
With that, we are...